Hello, everyone. Welcome to the August meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton Code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, we have five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call. Mario DeFolvio. Joe D'Angelo is absent. Chris Judgeeats.
Here I am, Rocky, like a hurricane.
Thank you. Kelly Weiss is absent. Manny Priest.
Here.
And Kyle Nedlich.
Here.
All right. Second item on the agenda is approval of last month's meetings minutes. They're posted on Basecamp. Anybody see any errors? Or things to correct on the minutes? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, motion by Chris, second by Mario. All in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right. Next item on the agenda are seeker determinations. In this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records. And ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. All right, so tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant Fire Omar Inc. Project address is 22 Charles Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of an addition onto an existing industrial building and the establishment of a 51,114 square foot light industrial business in the I-1 urban business park. Hello. Oh, you might have to, on the microphone, you might have to push the button until it turns green. And you do have to speak right up into it because they're pretty sensitive.
Hear me? Yeah, okay. I don't know if it's working. Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect.
So apologize for my English. My name is Paolo Macabruni and coming from Italy. I am an aerospace engineer and I work in the industry of automation and robotics since something like 30 years. And I'm here on charge of Fire Omar New York as I am in business with them since 10 years ago, more or less. I know personally the owner, Kieran Higgins, and we are working actually on a new facility, which is in 22 Charles Street. I'm leading their operations. And what we are doing basically is to install a new facility that will produce products for the building industry. Fire Omar is a building group in New York. They are actually, at the moment, they are building a part of the Terminal One of JFK and they have several other sites. And Fire Omar, some years ago, they acquired, they bought a plant in Connecticut with some equipment into there. These equipments were manufactured by me, by my company in Italy. And these equipment are able to produce structural panels that are used in the building industry to easy operation on the field. But also, they are a kind of new technology that is able to provide energy efficiency to old buildings, not only new constructions. Okay, so Fire Omar since the beginning is focusing on producing these products that are, let's say, something like panels, big panels already with windows that you can apply to the exterior of old buildings and create a kind of fish box to the building itself. Okay, increasing the energy rate to an R26 rate, okay, which is the nowadays standards, okay, and provide more energy efficiency. These equipment are in Connecticut at the moment. We are moving everything here in Binghamton because we had this, I don't know, in the reality, the whole story, but Kieran told me, Paolo, please come in the United States and help me about this. I came here the first time in the beginning of May. And in the reality, I never went back in Italy since then because I'm here working very hard in order to establish this new plant. We are working almost with, now we are working also with the Georgia team, an itinerant company, because in the beginning, I was not able to find the local manpower. But at the present stage, we already hired four people, okay, local people. And now we have contract with some supplier like Piccirilli, Mechanical, and some companies local. Yesterday and today, we had some new meetings for the plantings. Basically, I'm trying to, let's say, establish connection with the local companies. Because in my experience, this is not the first plant that I do in the United States. The lifespan of a plant is based on the connection you create with local people. Okay, and so I'm trying not only to put a new plant in place. I'm trying to create a pool of people that is working in the way that the plant will have a lifespan that is longer. The kind of business I can tell you is very profitable because the kind of product in the end that is produced is a product that is really sellable and is exactly what the market asks now. And the good thing is that now there is a building group behind. Because in Connecticut, the plant was in the hands of Australian guys. They were stepping into the United States for the first time. They didn't get a very good job because they were not aware about the building market. Now that there is a New York builders that has the knowledge in order to do the right products, I'm really confident that this plant will work very well. The problem is that, I tell you honestly, I'm an engineer, so I'm not mixed with political stuff or whatever. The plant that we took was a nightmare for me because it was full of the equipment of the cogeneration plant. And I have to remove almost everything. So the cogeneration, the cogenerator, the transformers, this kind of thing, so it was not, and also the floor space, it's not enough. Okay, so we immediately started with requesting the possibility to reshape the building because I need the floor space. In the end, Kieran provided, I think that already provided a PDF with drawings about the final stage of the building. Okay, in the reality, I am able to go in production even without this by probably November this year because I want the plant to be in production as soon as possible. So we will hire probably in the beginning 20, 25 people, okay? But we will work at a regime of the 20, 25% because we do not have floor space. So the equipment are going to produce a lot of products and I do not have a warehouse, let's say, where to store the products. So I will produce just in time. So as soon as I have an order, I will produce and load on trucks. Otherwise, it's impossible. And that's why Kieran started with the process of asking an extension of the building. And that's why we are here. Again, apologize for the English is so and so, I know, but if you have any question, I will try to answer.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have questions? Chris?
Yeah, actually, this first question made directed toward the planning department. Look, staff comments, it references something that is on the national places? What over in that neighborhood that's substantially contiguous with this? What, I guess I'm not familiar with, or there's nationally significant?
The Ansko factory was, is across Charles Street. So that, that fact, the 15 Charles. And the, I forget the number, but the, the building that's attached to 15 Charles is on a separate parcel, but both of those are the Ansko factory.
All right. Do you have, do you have any plans that we could see for the next meeting of what the building itself is going to look like? The addition or?
The product? Or the plant? I don't understand, sorry. Plants about what, sorry?
The, the new building or ultimately what the building is going to look like? So that part of our review process is just to make sure that it fits with the character?
Absolutely, yes. I just saw, believe me or not, I'm sorry, I was not aware about this meeting. I'm sorry, because I'm taking care about something like 200 different tasks and unfortunately, this is really important, but I didn't know and I just stepped in. I'm sorry. So I'm not prepared with a kind of presentation. But this morning, believe me or not, I just received a PDF with the 3D modeling of, of the building.
Great.
And probably I have on my mobile phone this, but it's not a presentation. But yes, we are working in that way. So definitely, I could even send you tomorrow at the email that probably already have in my, in my email account, a PDF showing the 3D of the final, of the final concept of the building, which is in the shape and form of the existing one.
Okay.
Okay, same colors, same kind of, you know, sheets on the outside, this kind of thing. And it is designed on my needs as a project engineer. I mean, and so it's clearly then expert will talk about what is possible and what is not possible to do in terms of volume. Okay, but in the reality, for the drawing I saw this morning, it is exactly what I would like to have in the end. The point is that you have to focus that in that building, in the end, they will work on probably only two shifts, not three shifts. Because these plants normally works on three shifts continuously. But I guess they will work on only two shifts with something like 25, 30 people per shift. And the most of the space will be used as warehouse because we have three days that we have to store the goods before delivery. Okay, this is set by codes, by rules, okay? Because I have to check the integrity of each panel before sending on, onsite, and this take three days for the product to rest. And that's why I ask for a lot of space as warehouse, okay? The space that was designed, it is just for a two day of, let's say, resting time. So it's, it's just enough, okay, to go in a good production, okay? But these are the dimensions that, that are good at the moment for them.
Okay. All right, so yeah, so between this meeting and the next meeting, you'd be able to send Tito or the planning department, whatever you've got that shows what the building itself will look like?
Tito is, it's, okay, now I give a face to a name. I have your form that I'm filling out, your long form, yes, I'm doing it. It's a lot of job and work, but it's okay, okay, Tito, thank you.
If you have any questions, just let me know.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much.
Tito, he says he has a list of 200 things to do and 150 of them are your list, your?
I'm sorry, it's, no, it's one, this is one of the most important thing. As for the boiler permit, I started in May to talk with the boiler inspector, New York Boiler Inspector, because I know it takes time.
Yeah.
And I need permissions in order, before doing anything.
Yeah.
Okay, so I know that it takes time and people involved, and so we started the sooner I could, but it was not, not really easy in the early beginning.
Okay. Just one other question. You said, so you'll, you'll have tractor trailers coming in for delivery to take materials, maybe drop off. Where are they? Do you have a loading dock? Because you don't show a loading dock on the plans that I can tell for where the trucks would actually be.
Okay, at the present stage, we have a road that is coming from behind 22 Charles Street, okay? Which is supposed to be in the beginning, the road, the trucks are coming in. And in the project is foreseen to have loading bay on the side of Flint Street, okay? So we are going to have a couple of loading bays for the, for the, for the trucks. But I want, I would like to try to have everything on the ground level, not on a higher level. So by using forklifts to load the trucks in the reality, because it's much, much easier for the kind of product that we are producing, okay?
All right, so you're probably just pulling the trucks right next to a, a?
A whole floor, exactly.
Forkliftings that?
Forklift everything inside.
All right, great. Anybody else have questions they want to ask? Chris?
So about the, the site plan that's been submitted to us, two questions for you about the site plan. So it's only showing 17 parking spaces.
Okay.
31 spaces are required. And you're even mentioning now that even the first round of hiring is going to be at least 20 to 25 people. And I'm saying here, it could be eventually up to 40 people. So why are you not providing more parking spaces? Why are you looking to ask us to waive a parking requirement?
Well, in the reality, okay, the point is this. At the present stage, I have focused as a project engineer on the productivity, I tell you honestly. So I said, I need this space in order to have the plant in production with this kind of regimen, okay? I know that Kieran purchased or is in the, in the time of purchasing the land that is behind the lot of 22 Charles Street, okay? And we were talking about the possibility to have a parking lot or space also there for additional storage in the future, okay? I'm not directly involved into the design of the expansion of the building, okay? And clearly, I'm too fresh to tell you and I have no knowledge about the rules that are here in the United States about this. So if there is a lack of parking lot, I will tell Kieran that, look, the commission said that we need to have 15 more parking lots or whatever in the early beginning. And we will try to find a solution to this for sure. On the other hand, as a project engineer, for me, it's more important that the plant will go in production. Will, will create jobs, let's say, and together with the, let's say, the progress of the business, then we'll create more facilities around. But clearly, this is a good point and I will mark it out, point it out, sorry, to Kieran about. So parking lot clearly is a problem, okay, in that area also. I know that there is a parking lot on the, on the corner of 22 Charles Street. I don't know if employees can work, can use also that parking lot, this, I don't know, but I will ask.
The other question I would have is on the site plan, on the, I guess, the driveway entrance that's going on to West Street. It's very narrow, the, the staff report mentioned it's only 20 feet wide.
Yep.
Not wide enough for two-way traffic. Is there planning to mark that and maybe be marked on the next set of plans? That this is an entry only or an exit only for one-way traffic?
It's an entry or exit only. It is exactly what we discussed with Kieran something like two weeks ago, okay? Because at the present stage, we have to work with what we have, okay?
I think we're, you may need to mark that and sign that as only entrance or only exit.
For the world people or just for us?
Or everybody, anybody, I'll defer to Tito since?
Ah, no, 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 I mean.
So the driveway coming in off of West Street is not wide enough for two-way traffic according to our code? So it would have to be only one-way traffic? So people could either come in through West or exit through West, but not both?
But, but for us, there's no problem because in the reality, we work on Charles Street and the opposite street, which is Flint Street or something like that. I don't remember the name of the street that is behind, okay? But for us, one way is more than enough, I mean.
We can, we can, tomorrow, we can talk about the site plan and making that change on the site plan.
Okay.
And then just some information for you. There is an option, from what I understand, for them to, to purchase more of the business park to the north. That's what he's referring to as expanding for parking. So that is a possibility. But in the meantime, for them to get started, from what I understand, they, they would need that waiver for now to be able to meet the requirements and be able to move forward.
All right. So the staff report also asks for clarification on the planting. So this is a sizable, sizable project. The code for the City of Binghamton has some requirements for planting, so how much planting, types of planting that you'd have to provide. Is there any problem with giving us a full planting plan between now and the next meeting that just shows?
It's not a problem at all.
Okay.
Yes, for sure.
All right, so just a plan that shows exactly what you're planning to plant?
Exactly.
Around the site.
It's good.
All right, great.
Well, in the reality, we are trying also to reshape the building in a way that is a good-looking one. So sooner or later, we will talk about the chimneys.
I guess, and then the last question, so there's an area on the plan that's just labeled trash storage. Could we, just between now and the next meeting, could you just define exactly what that's going to look like and how you're accessing it with trash removal company? How they want to get in and out and fencing and?
Okay, I understand, yes, this can be done for sure.
That'd be great.
The other good thing of this project that I can say is that we are replacing oil big tanks with a green energy plant. I mean, so it's, it's good stuff.
Yes, so what is, what's happening with those tanks that are there now? They're?
Well, in the reality, we are going to share them off, okay? And recycle the material with Todd Greenblatt, is a company that we are working with.
Yeah.
And tomorrow, I have a meeting with Goric to come and Luciano Piccirilli also. Because we are trying to make the, out the best of what we have, okay? So it's, it's a plant that in the 90s, chapeau to the engineer, it was a perfect plant in the 90s. Now it's, it's something that we have to replace. So what I have to tell you is that they left the plant that was really clean. I mean, although I've been into the oil tanks to check, it's clean. I mean, it's, they left the plant in a condition that is perfect.
All right.
So it's, there is no contamination, there are no leaks, cracks, this kind of stuff. Unfortunately, we are talking about very huge, let's say, big links. I don't know how to say it better in English, a big tank, and we have to remove it. And that is a part that during August and September will be done.
Yeah.
So we are moving very fast into there, working 12 hours a day, more or less. Because I told you, I would like to go in production by November, December this year. It will be for me a Christmas present, okay? But even with the tiny production, okay, then the job will, will start, help itself to grow, you understand?
Yeah.
And the experience that I have was do the, do little things and then they will stack on and everything will grow.
Okay.
So, yes.
All right. Any other questions, concerns at this point?
Just a general question, will the, the exhaust stack remain on the building?
At the present stage, at the phase, let's say, that I have divided, I'm sorry, yeah, divided, the projects into three steps mainly. The first one is to go in production as soon as possible. And so we are removing from inside and outside just what is necessary. Then the second step is the expansion of the building, okay? So go in a production that will bring the regime to at least 60%, okay? And this involve the construction of a new area and this is what we are talking about. And then there is the third step, that is the construction of the warehouse that should go in the, in north direction. So about the lot that he was talking about, that we have an option, Tito was saying. There will be the direction of the warehouse where the chimneys are, okay? In Kieran, into Kieran will, is we, we remove all the stacks in five minutes, we do everything. I already had a talk with the company doing that. They told me that is not like cutting a tree, okay? Because they are really tall, okay? We did an inspection of the interior of the big stack using a drone. I have videos to show you, is in a very good shape, let's say, so it's safe, okay? The third step is foreseen to happen to start right after the completion of the second phase, which is the new building, let's say, construction, okay? And so on a timeline point of view, I can't give you an answer because I will not be here anymore. I hope that on March next year, I will have a plant in production with a team that I've been able to build. So with a project, sorry, a plant manager, managers on the offices and manpower working on the equipment. And then I will remotely service, okay, the plant from Italy and come here once every month, let's say, one week, just to keep that, to give an overhead that everything is going smooth. But then you are able to go with your own legs and it will be from, from Kieran, okay, and his team to go ahead. My support and why I'm coming from Italy is only because the equipment that is going to be installed, they are unique in the world. They were prototypes and they are doing products that are not existing on the market. That's why I'm here, because they were unique equipments, okay, with a very high value, okay? And so Kieran called me and we went in touch something like 10 years ago about this, okay? So my knowledge that I can transfer is nothing that in the reality, you do not have. We are, we are talking about a standard plant and I'm sure that I will find here people to run it in the right way, even better than I can, because it is not my job, okay? My job is to teach them how to make a good product. Then it's up to them to sell it and produce it in the right way. So I am trying to create conditions only and not to teach anyone nothing about, just the knowledge to go ahead. Then second step and third step will be with some other rather than Paolo Macabruni, I tell you, honestly.
All right.
That's all.
Great.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the addition of a non-residential? of a non-residential building occurring wholly or partially within or substantially contiguous to a historic building structure or facility that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, exceeding twenty-five percent of any threshold established in the section six one seven point four, which is a seeker type one action for seeker review. Alright, second by Chris, all in favor? Uh, five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion then to set a public hearing for the project at our September meeting at five twenty. Second by Manny, all in favor? Alright, five in favor, zero opposed. Alright, so we'll have you back in September and we'll have a public hearing where we'll open up, you'll come back, you'll present, just give us a reminder of your project. Uh, you'll get everything to Tito between now and our next meeting in September.
Okay.
Uh, and then we'll open it up to the community, just if they want to speak in favor, against any concerns about the project. Uh, and then we'll see if it gets approved to go forward from our review.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. Bye.
Alright, on to our second seeker determination. This is for the applicant Skyway Equities. The project address is one sixty-two Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of the basement and first floor of an existing mixed-use building into a self-service storage warehouse in the C one service commercial district. Nope.
There we go. Uh, Robert Harner, Lakeside Engineering. We've got offices in Utica, Binghamton, as well as, um, my address, corporate office, eighty-three Fall Street, Seneca Falls, New York.
Alright, wanna introduce everybody right up front or?
I'm Eva San Pedro. I work for Skyway. Uh, we're at twenty-five Park Ave in New York City, New York.
Eduardo Esper, also from Skyway, same address.
Great. Alright, thank you.
So basically, we've got a four-story mixed-use building at one sixty-two Court Street. Uh, floors two through four are completely occupied. Uh, there's fifty-six units there. Uh, apartment units. Uh, first floor has been vacant for quite some time. So we're just looking for another use. Um, so currently we have the, uh, basement and the first floor that we're proposing to do sixty-six, um, storage units. The storage units will be either four feet by eight feet or eight by eight. Uh, primary, primary use would be for the residents. Uh, currently in town and around, there's a shortage. Uh, if you go to U-Haul or other places, there's just no place for um, the tenants to, to store bikes or golf clubs, whatever. So in a sense, um, that's what we're looking to do is to repurpose that space, um, from being unoccupied to, to basically storage units. The existing building, um, currently is up to code. Uh, there was a fire alarm system put in, a complete fire suppression system put in. And, um, those would still remain, um, for this project as well, which helps with, you know, means of egress, fire separations, et cetera, which obviously would happen in the next design phase. So we can get it through, um, you know, building permit phase with the code office. So in a nutshell, um, that's what we're looking to do is to just create sixty-six storage units in the basement as well as the first floor. And just to point out, there is also two means of egress out of both of those spaces.
Alright. Any questions, comments, concerns? Chris?
Yeah, um, I guess the first question is, it's not clear for me from the site plans that were submitted. So the first floors also include storage units, correct?
Correct, yes.
So what's gonna happen, I guess, with the, the windowed face that's facing Court Street? There's some big glass windows there.
Correct, um.
What's happening in the front of the building?
Yeah, we didn't get it. Currently, there's just blinds and they're shut. Um, so that would either remain the same or they could be fogged over. We haven't got into final design on those details, but those windows would remain. The facade of the building, everything stays the same.
Okay, that, that's, that, that's a helpful answer to that question. Okay. It was not clear to me if you're gonna like tear off the front and then build these storage units all the way up to a new brick wall or something. Okay. Um, the other thing is in the staff report, can you, uh, discuss for us how you plan to have the storage rooms be accessed and the security measures?
Sure. So currently there's, um, off of the first floor, uh, Carroll Street and Court Street, there's a three-foot door. Um, so you can easily, you know, bring, bring products, uh, your storage, you know, items within those two spaces. Um, from there, you would then go down to the basement. And again, there's two ways to, to get down to the basement as well. Um, so essentially it would just be a locked, secure door. Um, again, we didn't get into the final design. I don't know if it's a card reader, a security code or, or what you might be thinking to, to secure the door. But certainly, you know, each unit would have its own, you know, key and lock. Um, but as far as protecting the building from somebody to get in, we would just have some sort of security system there. You know, potentially cameras, potentially a card reader or some sort of code where you could get in.
Tito, what needs to be specified by the applicant on any updated site plans about the security plans?
That would be, that would be up to you. Um, if you have concerns about operational stuff like that, you can certainly, you know, require that they put that on the floor plan, the site plan. What, what, what kind of access mechanism is at the door for, for customers? Um, they, you could have them make a decision and put that on the floor plan.
And it could probably be as simple as a note, I would think, too, just card reader at, you know, at door for occupants.
Of, of course, yeah, we would certainly do that. And if security cameras are something that, you know, they would like to do, we would probably actually show those on the site plan.
Okay. Yeah, I don't even think it would need to be a separate AEB plan. It could just be right on.
Makes it easy.
Sure, yep. I, I just had a question on the fire suppression. Is, is that existing to remain or is it gonna be upgraded for all the potential combustible storage there?
Yep, currently, um, the full, the building is fully sprinkled and covered with a fire alarm system. So our, our plan is to leave that in place. Um, currently there's a one-hour fire separation, uh, between the first floor and the second floor, which is required by code. So that would just need to remain in place. Um, if there are modifications, that would be shown, you know, to the code office. But right now, it appears that we have fully coverage of both the basement and the first floor, and we wouldn't have to modify those systems. The idea would be that, you know, we're not gonna build separate rooms that go all the way up to the ceiling. Um, we're gonna basically, you know, go up eight feet and then allow it to be open with some sort of, uh, steel product or open grate. So that way, if there is a fire, um, it would, it would take care of that. Um, one of the things that, um, came up is, you know, we don't want flammable, uh, items in there, right? So lawnmowers, snow blowers, gas cans. So whenever they sign, you know, whatever agreement, those, you know, hazardous materials really shouldn't be in a mixed-use building. So that's something that would, we would document on the plans as well.
Yeah, the non, the non-hazardous makes sense. I guess that was where my question stemmed from originally. So.
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, you don't want to put water, uh, you know, on a gas fire.
Right. So. Yeah.
So I need to ask some tough parking questions now.
Yes.
So currently, your square footage requires two parking spaces. And there are no parking spaces on this lot. Um, what, what, what is your plan? I, um, the staff report notes that, uh, reducing your, your square footage to only four thousand square feet would eliminate the need for parking. I'm assuming you, you're not interested in that.
No, and we're talking the two spaces for the storage units, is that correct? Okay. Yeah, I mean, currently it was our understanding that if it's used primarily by the occupants, that that requirement may not exist. There's also onsite, you know, street parking. So again, we didn't flush out all those details, but you know, it's our understanding, um, you know, parking may not be needed. Um, you know, for that, because it's not gonna be occupied by an employee. It's, it's really a remote system primarily for the tenants.
The, the use of self-storage warehouse has a parking requirement.
Yes.
The first four thousand square feet of that str- because it's an existing building, don't get used in the calculation. So the remainder, whatever you're at above four thousand square feet, that does have a parking requirement and that came out to two spaces, right?
Um,
the use by the tenants, the, the fact that it may only be used by tenants does not, does not affect that, that parking requirement.
Off on that, um, there, you're, the current plan is for sixty-six storage units.
Correct.
Are there sixty-six tenants in the building as is?
Currently, there's fifty-six.
In that building?
Yes.
I didn't, okay.
However, um, we've sort of laid the units out just to maximize what we could do. However, they're also designed in a way where somebody might not want a four-by-eight foot unit. So we can take a wall out and have less and may make an eight-by-eight. So there's a combination of, you know, so supply and demand is sort of gonna dictate, you know, do they need a smaller space or a larger space? Um, so we're just basically showing sixty-six spaces, um, primarily for tenants. However, um, you know, there is that opportunity if, if there is a, a need outside of that building that, you know, there's a potential for that as well.
Okay. And how many residential units in this building will you be losing on the basement and the first floor to construct these units?
Zero. Currently, um, both floors, basement and, uh, first floor are un, unoccupied. So there's no apartments. It's only on two through four.
Okay.
So as far as the parking, I guess we would, you know, unless you have something to add, we'd have to look for a variance or potentially see if we could get a designated spot on the street. I don't know what that would entail, um, where maybe a fifteen-minute, you know, loading area. Um, if that would suffice for two parking spaces, um, you know, the fact that, you know, there's no employees there, you know, I'm just don't know if there would be a concession for the actual physical spaces.
My concern is, because I hear from fellow city residents all the time that parking can be a nightmare, especially with, love them all dearly, our college friends, our college student friends.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming these are largely college students that are A, your tenants and B, the likely customers of these storages when they're storing their golf clubs and stuff while they're, you know, going away for summer vacation and winter break and things like that. So I can see local residents being frustrated if there's a swarm of New Jersey and Long Island SUVs swarming that intersection to load and unload those first couple of weeks at the beginning and the end of the school year. So I think trying to avoid that, yes, the, the planning commission does have the authority to waive. But you gotta give us a good reason to waive, not just because we can.
Correct.
So I think that's, that's what I'm asking.
Hundred percent, and we certainly appreciate that. And currently we're landlocked. Um, but we could look at, you know, some other options. You know, there is a lot across the street. Maybe they could rent some. Um, so that's something that we'll take into consideration for sure. It'd be over four thousand, so it'd be two spaces.
Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns? Alright. Uh, I'll make a motion that the proposal involves reuse of an existing mixed-use building, which is a type-two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required. Second by Kyle, all in favor? Alright, that's five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at our September meeting at five twenty-five. Second by Chris, all in favor? Alright, five in favor, zero opposed. Alright.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
See you back in September.
Nick, I think next time you really have to sing that line, "See you in September."
Is that a song? See you. See you. I gotta look this up now. Alright. Alright, our third seeker determination tonight is for the applicant, Robert Pornbeck. Project address is two eleven Court Street. This is the site plan review and a special use permit to convert an existing residential building into a congregate living facility with seven sleeping rooms in the C one service commercial district.
Good evening.
Hello, guys.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Bob Pornbeck and I own the property at two eleven Court. I've owned it for twenty-five years. Alright. Uh, it used to be a law firm. And as you can tell by the site plan of the way the rooms are set up, it, it's got two separate kitchens, two separate bathrooms. And all the rooms are off of corridors or, uh, a vestibule, I guess you could call it, when you walk in the, the front door. And, uh, I've had rooms there. I've been using it as a rooming house for the last twenty-five years. Uh, without any incidents, anything else. Uh, I run a pretty tight ship. And, uh, just looking for the approval for that property. There's plenty of parking and in that situation, most of the tenants do not have vehicles. So we have like eight spots. Uh, I think one tenant has a vehicle in the whole property. So I'm looking for your approval. This is Danielle Dunster. She is from, uh, ACBC and she's, uh, the supervisor of housing over there. So she can.
So hi, I'm Danielle Dunster. Can you guys hear me on this? Okay.
Talk right into it.
Thank you.
There you go.
Uh, I'm the housing coordinator and grant administrator for ACBC's, uh, Re- Relocation Assistance Program grant. And I've been working with Bob. Um, we have been focused on housing the homeless in our area. Uh, currently we have fifty-two people since April sixth that have been housed and twenty-six of those have been with Mr. Pornbeck. So I'm here for support, uh, to just support his approval by you, by you all, um, because we need more of him in this area, uh, because I have a hundred and ten applicants still on my desk. So let's vote yes.
The other thing I wanted to say, my prior business, courtesy cab, we used to transport people to, uh, hotels. It was called Code Blue. And this was in the middle of winter. We would transport people to hotels in the area. Well, every hotel in Broom County was occupied for those rent to DSS. We were taking people down to Wego from Broom County because all the hotels were full. Now, let's get down to dollars and cents, okay? Each hotel room is eighty dollars per night for that person that is homeless. So I'm not sure. I don't have a figure on how many rooms that DSS provides for. But if you do the math, twenty-six people times eighty dollars a night times thirty nights. Take a guess how much that is?
It's a big number.
Chris?
Four million dollars.
Sixty-two thousand, four hundred dollars to the taxpayers of Broom County. I don't charge sixty-two thousand dollars. I don't even charge fifty thousand. I don't charge twenty thousand, okay? What a difference. It's, I'm a taxpayer and that makes, that makes me happy that I can house these people, solve two problems, homelessness and also save the taxpayers money. So that's why I'm looking for your approval for this project.
Gotcha.
Existing housing that's already been for twenty-five years.
Yeah. Is it okay if I ask, how come you're in now asking for the approval? Did something happen? You needed to get it approved?
Yeah, I, I don't know what happened.
Okay.
I think I was evicting somebody, uh, from there and they went to, um, what is, what's it called? The, uh, where they defend them? What's it called, Chris? Yeah, legal aid.
Okay.
So, um, I had somebody that was a squatter there. They went to legal aid. The next thing you know, I'm here.
Okay, alright. Alright, um, so there's also a question about whether or not you actually, for the way you use it, do you need the three parking spaces in front of the house?
Do we use them? Do we use them?
Yeah.
Uh, they're there.
Okay, they are there.
They are there and I've got five more out back of the house. Like I said, only one person I think has a car over there.
Okay. So you've way more parking spaces than you've ever needed.
Way more.
And, okay. Would it be helpful if we waived the three parking spaces in the front of the building or, or you said they're already there, so it doesn't really?
They're already there.
They're already there, okay. All right, and then. A difficult question, but if you were to no longer be in the business of. Renting the house, we always have to look at what happens to when you sell the house to somebody else. Is the idea that it would go to ACBC or somebody you, another, it'd be on the market, somebody else could pick it up?
It would be sold, uh, I'm a Realtor also, so it would be sold. Whoever, if I did, I have no intentions of selling.
Yeah.
But down the road, if it does have the, uh, permit for the usage as a rooming house. That would be beneficial, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay.
And as you can tell by the last people that were here. And I'm, you know, right in the mix of everything in the city of Binghamton. Nobody's renting office space downtown. Okay, they've got that big beautiful building on the corner of Carroll Street. Office space for many, many years. You can't find anybody rent. It's a thing of the past. So many people working from home and whatever.
Okay. All right. Chris?
Bob, the, uh, the staff report mentions the, the site plan should be updated to show the location of a garbage enclosure. To meet all the city requirements.
I pick up all the garbage. We have garbage cans out back and I pick it up and take it to. I have a dump truck.
Okay.
And we pick it up every week.
Tito, is that sufficient for what you guys need in planning?
I think ideally you just show the location of where those cans are.
They're right in the back, down the driveway, on the right, right in the back of the building.
Okay, so you would show that on the site plan and I, I, I do believe they need to be sheltered somehow. Under a carport or in a fenced enclosure or, or because of the number of units that you have.
Number of what?
The number of units that you would have. You need to, um, provide some sort of enclosure for the garbage. So it could be a lean to, it could be a shed, it could be a dumpster. But there has to be some sort of enclosure back there and that should be noted on the, on the site plan.
How about the cans that are from like Taylor Garbage that have the top on them and they have the wheels on them?
Um, I think the. Text of the code says enclosure, so. Um, I, I think there needs to be some, I, I'll look into it and I'll let you know, but I believe there needs to be some sort of.
Okay.
Uh, structure around the garbage.
That's all I have.
All right, any other questions? Comments, concerns? All right, then I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing residential building, which is a type two action. And no further environmental review is required for secret. Second by Manny, all in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at our September meeting at five thirty. Second by Manny, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. We'll see you back in September. Ooh, September what for our next meeting?
I think it's the third. I'm guessing though.
It's the first Tuesday, but that's right after Labor Day, so.
Okay, September third.
Third? Five thirty?
Actually, before Bob writes that down, Tito, I know sometimes in the past. When it's after a holiday, sometimes we get booted out of chambers. Do you, do you know if that September third date is definite, we're gonna get?
Yeah, that's on the calendar.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so what will be, it'll just be a public hearing, anybody that comes in favor or not in favor? I know.
Uh, so Tito will help you with the signage.
Alan will be in touch about the legal noticing.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, one, one thing I'd like to say about the next, uh, with the cannabis building on Shenango Street. Could I mention that right now?
Uh, probably not.
You, you haven't opened the public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing is not open for that project, so.
Okay.
If you want to stay though, for. Ten minutes.
Yeah, there's only one. You could leave some, uh. You can email me or write something down and leave it now if you want.
All right, I'm, I've got that building surrounded pretty much over there on, uh, Shenango, so.
Okay, when, do you want to just stay for the public hearing? It's next, I think.
I really can't, but. Can I just say I'm in favor of it? Just, I want them to.
Yeah.
Okay, unofficially, I'm in favor of it. The only thing I, I've been picking up the garbage over there and, you know, there's. I know the buildings in limbo, whatever, but, um, you know, the vegetation is all overgrown. I did not touch that, but. Uh, people, a lot of homeless people, they'll pull their cart up there and empty it right out and. My guys have been cleaning that up and that's the only thing. I just want to make sure that. It looks good.
All right.
That there's a lot of overgrown, big bushes there and stuff, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate it, that's unofficial.
Unofficial, very unofficial. Uh, all right, uh, oh, we do have one more secret determination, so this is for the applicant. FGR Realty LLC, project address is one eighty eight Court Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the demolition of an existing structure and construction of ancillary parking lot. In the C one service commercial district.
Uh, one minor correction there, because they are proposing combining the lots with the lot. That the building is on. It would not be ancillary parking, therefore does not require a special use permit. It still does require site plan review though.
All right.
Thank you. Hi, Sarah Campbell with Him and Howard and Kettle representing the applicant FGR. With Philip Akel as a principal and Chris Lynch from Delta. Um, as you've indicated, we're requesting site plan approval to construct a parking lot in a C one service. Commercial, uh, district. Um, I don't have to tell you much about the C one district, but it. Designated areas where concentrated mixture of commercial, storage and light processing. Um, with citywide or regional significance. Um, the applicant, oh, do you all have the plans in front of you? I brought sets in case you want them, but does anyone want them? No, good. Okay, so the applicant owns one eighty four Court Street, one eighty eight Court Street and twenty three Street. Um, it's part of an existing campus-like parking arrangement which supports. Both the one eighty four Court Street building as well as, um, a cooperative arrangement with Saint Mary's Church. Um, next door. So this is a situation where, um, we're just adding. The house is coming down, um, and we're adding landscaping, um, but the issue we have. Um, the only issue I think is with respect to the complete, um, perimeter for landscaping buffer. Um, I would submit to you that it doesn't really make sense because all areas where there is a lot line, right? Over the lot line is another parking lot. Um, so if you are, if you in, if you constructed. These five foot buffers on these property lines, you would actually impede traffic flow amongst the different uses. Um, and obviously sharing parking and, you know, Phil- Philip's. Great about letting the church use his parking lot for funerals or weddings or, you know, when, when, when it's not being used by his tenant. Yeah.
Unfortunately, more funerals than weddings.
More funerals than weddings, I know. Um, so what we've tried to do is. Do what we can with, with the site that there is. Um, just so you know, we're removing one. Street, um, on both sides of that existing house, there are curb cuts, so we're removing that. Um, we're combining the parcels that will revol- result in twenty eight parking spaces to serve that building. We're adding four new landscaping beds, um, four new trees. There's already, as you can see, a lot of street trees on both J and. Court Street. Um, the plan will really dress up the, the whole frontage, um, dress up the church. It'll be well maintained, safe, upgraded. Um. And that's really it. We're just asking tonight for any feedback that you might have, uh, so that we can prepare for the next. Meeting and then, um. To, uh, call a public hearing for your next meeting. That's really it.
Chris?
Oh, hi. Um. First question I'm gonna toss to Tito and, and planning staff. Um, compatibility with the comprehensive plan is listed in the s- staff report. And the, the fame, the line I'm curious about is the demolition of viable housing. Uh, is contrary to the following goals, the comprehensive plan, dot, dot, dot. So how? How is it determined that a building is or is not viable housing?
It's an existing, uh, residential building, so the last use was not residential, but it was originally constructed as a house. Um, and it's existing and sort of available. Um, viable doesn't mean anymore or any less than that, I mean. If it was in extremely poor condition or, um. You know, there wasn't a residential building there or something like that, then that would be different, but viable just means. In this case that, um, there's a house there.
Verification. Now for the applicant, um, I'm looking briefly at the site plan. I know a lot more about this. Saint Mary's Park that I should, um. The, the area of the parking lot that I guess is the, towards the north side. Going towards Court Street.
Yep.
Um. Currently, there's. Is, is the plan to make the new parking lot. At grade with the current Saint Mary's lot? And the reason I'm asking is because. In contrast to the J C area where those areas are sort of already at grade, there, there, there might be a. A six inch, nine inch, foot long drop in some of those areas where the Saint Mary's lot comes and then when there's. Like it drops off to some grass and or gravel at some points. Um, so I'm, I'm just curious if there's a plan to. For like a runaway freezing to make that at grade or how, how that's planned to be hit, or there's some sort of curb buffer, there's someone's not gonna drive. Six inches off from parking lot A to parking lot B.
Well, we certainly don't want that to happen, obviously, and we did do an urban reduction, urban, or. Whatever that stands for, so it's not a SWIP, it's an ERP. Um, so the site's been designed to contain any drainage or runoff, um, that it generates. But, I mean, we'll certainly look at that. Obviously, we don't want any traffic hazards. That's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Any other question? Uh, random question, what, what is the hole in the back of the building? What does that go down to?
That ramp goes down to the basement door. The basement is occupied. And, uh, that's how they get in and out of there.
Gotcha. Do you have water issues down there?
Uh, that is like the highest point in the city and, uh, we do not take water in that basement. It's one of the few buildings in the world I don't worry about on weekends like the one that's coming.
All right. All right.
So the question is still out there, um, you know, whether you have the authority to waive this full perimeter parking. Um, Corporation Council is taking the position that you don't. Um. I'm not gonna argue about that. Um, so we will be proceeding to the ZBA for variance relief on that. Um. And. Right, so yeah, so we're just asking, um, that you would hold your public hearing next month, which would be September third. And then theoretically grant relief subject to the ZBA's determination because they will not meet till after you.
Okay. All right. If there's no any other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the, whoop, Chris? Yeah.
Um. Can, can I, can I be educated by Corporation Councils to what, what's? The applicant has mentioned here that we, we can't, we shouldn't, we're not allowed to, can, can you?
With regard to, with regards to landscaping?
A, the landscaping buffer?
Yeah, so there's a provision in the code. That allows the planning commission to waive, um, certain bulk requirements up to a certain percentage. Um, setbacks, parking requirements, um, there's a chart that lists it out. The landscaping buffer requirement is not included in that chart. Um, and therefore would fall outside of what. The planning commission can waive. Um, also from sort of a. Land use law perspective. Um. All of. The planning commission's ability to waive all of those requirements is limited up to a certain percentage. It's not like you can grant a hundred percent. Difference from what the code requires. And because the, there's nothing set out in the landscaping piece. It wouldn't make sense to allow the planning commission because it's left off that chart to all of a sudden be able to waive. Up to a hundred percent of the landscaping buffer that would otherwise be required. Um, so. Planning commission does have the ability to waive certain bulk requirements, but the landscaping buffer is not one of them.
Well, let, let me ask, is not gonna say help this applicant tonight or next month at the public hearing? But why was landscaping left off this chart in the zoning law?
I'd have to go back and see if I could dig it up. I don't.
Was it, was this a purposeful policy decision or was this an oversight?
No, I think it's just a really badly written section of your code, to be perfectly honest. Um, you know, from a, from an advocate position, I could certainly argue that you are entitled to waive this. If you, it's, it just, you can read it for yourself. It's section four, ten forty eight. Um, but from a, from a legal perspective. It kind of says you can waive anything you want to waive, which theoretically wouldn't make sense because then why would you have a ZBA? Right? That, and the ZBA has rules and, you know. Things like that, so I, I, I think it's a badly written section and I think it should be cleaned up, but. I'm not gonna have an argument about it. I could appeal. And ask the ZBA what they think, but again, I think it's just better that we go through the ZBA process. What I would appreciate though is, um, looking at the landscaping plan and the fact that we are providing landscaping. You know, a fair amount, um. Maybe a recommendation or your thoughts with respect to the variance.
Anybody want to weigh in on that?
I mean, I, I have no problem with. The ZBA waiving such a variance, although I would also wonder out loud for a different discussion for a different day. If there are things that maybe should be addressed in the zoning law. Um, for example, this, the fact that the landscaping was not included in this chart. Is that something, I mean, bless our current city council, I'm not sure if they're. Microscopically inspecting the zoning law to, to make that kind of a change. Is that something that we as planning commission members or ZBA members should be as a citizen initiative submitting to? The city clerk's office, here's a proposal that this should be added or amended to zoning law paragraph twenty four?
So I think certainly this board and or the ZBA could request city council to. Amend that section or at least look at it. Um, to see about clarifying it and possibly adding, uh, the landscaping buffer. As an option for. Something that the planning commission could waive up to a certain percentage. Um. But that's up to these members and the members of ZBA.
And that's how codes generally get changed, you know, you keep a list of all the things that come up for a certain period of time and then. Every now and then you make a modification and you fix them.
Ms. Kim, I'm gonna ask you one more question, as, as a, as a practitioner who's regular before both the, uh, planning commission and the ZBA. I'm assuming you have a mental checklist of. Those types of things that might need, might be addressed in a future revision of zoning law paragraphs. One through one thousand and twelve?
I do.
Okay.
And the, and as a matter of fact, the last time the code was rewritten, I was asked to look at the draft and make comments, so I was happy to do that.
Chris, just one thing about the, that, the modifications that the planning commission can make. Those are all bulk requirements with the exception of parking and all of those things. Those are all bulk requirements with the exception of parking and all of those things are sort of set whole numbers. And so it those things are easy for the planning commission to adjust based on a percentage. The landscaping is not, is not, it's it, it is site specific. And it's not like a quantity of landscaping that needs to be provided, so that is probably why it's not in that chart because that chart is just, is, is, is just bulk requirements. All the other stuff that's required for different land uses is, is not in that, in that list and landscaping is one of those things that's required for that, the parking lot land use.
All right. Okay, one more item. In the staff comments, I mentioned that COD granted conditional approval and then below it says the proposal requires COD review. Just wanted to clarify.
It doesn't have to go back to COD.
Got it.
But we initially went through COD because they were, that's where you go to get permission to demolish.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, that's just a list of all the agencies that that are involved in this and COD is one, but COD already conducted their review. What they found was that they were okay with the demolition provided that the applicant could provide at least seven parking spaces as a result of that demolition for a total of twenty-eight parking spaces in this new combined parking lot, so they made that sort of conditional decision. And now it's before you, you folks to you know, either approve or deny the site plan and the zoning board to either approve or deny the landscape variance.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'll make a motion that the proposal is an unlisted action under seeker. Seconded by Manny, all in favor? Five in favor, zero opposed, and I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five thirty? Five forty, five forty?
Because we're keeping to the time so well here.
Five forty at our September meeting. All right, seconded by Chris, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you back in September. All right, on to our next portion of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning and then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any member of the applicant's team that is planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. All right, so tonight our one and only public hearing is for the applicant Eric Rundell's. Project address is two twenty-five Shenango Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of an industrial cannabis business in an existing industrial building in the C six limited neighborhood commercial district. Welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you guys got your updated emails. I believe the last time I just, I just forward one off, but the last time I was here, there wasn't an email showing the new plan for the building that had the dimensions, which I think Chris had asked for the last time I was here. He wanted interior dimensions.
Did it, did you email that to me or?
I believe so, yeah.
Sorry, just for our record, name and address.
Sorry, my name is Eric Rundell's. Address is two two five Shenango Street.
Do you live in the building right now?
No, do you want my home address?
Oh. You know what? I've actually never thought about it. Does it matter what address they give for the, for the?
I could, there are plenty of applicants that are giving their
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The address their affiliate.
It's funny, I've never thought about that before, what address people give. You're not living in the building.
I just forwarded you the email again, I believe.
Okay, I think the last thing I got was the OCM documents on me. Not getting it.
Is it P I M?
T L.
T L M Martinez at city of Binghamton.gov?
T L Martinez, T L M A R T.
T L Martinez at city of Binghamton, yeah.
Dot gov, yep, there it is.
You got it?
Yep.
I just missed that.
I can upload it now on Basecamp, but maybe you can give a summary of what, what the changes are.
I'm on number four. We had, we had, one of the questions was, was there going to be signage? I said there would be no signage. Another question would be where would the dumpsters be? The dumpsters are inside, they're located in the stall on the left side of the building. And then it also shows the individual room dimensions. I'm, I'm proposing to use thirty-one-ish hundred square feet of this space to grow cannabis. It's an eleven thousand square foot building. Yeah, the other, I don't know if I just mentioned this, but parking space one is being admitted. You wanted, you asked for a buffer zone in that area. And the last thing was cleaning up the landscape area, which my neighbor who was just here was talking about. It's a bunch of grapevines. And I pick up bags of garbage there every week. It's, it is a problem, but.
All right. We'll look at the, the revised plan when it comes in, but we did talk about options for making it so that people did not have to pull out into Shenango Street after they parked. Any, any thoughts on that or?
Correct, so I spaced the parking spaces quite a bit apart so that they're going horizontal rather than perpendicular with the building, so you're able to back up, drive forward. And there's, there's quite a bit of space there for four spots escalated. There is an existing driveway and a curb cut and I presume we will use that.
All right.
It's up. The last file, the name is five, seven, twenty-four A max plan elevation.
It might, might take a second.
Yeah, I understand.
So the fenced enclosure, will that be taken down?
Correct.
Is the area around the fence enclosure asphalt or gravel? Tough to tell from the photo.
Could you repeat that again?
Is the area around the fenced enclosure asphalt or gravel? It is tough to tell from the photo.
It's gravel.
Okay.
There's concrete as well, but a good section of that is gravel. And then there's a concrete sidewalk, of course.
I guess would that need to be asphalt in accordance with requirements? Just, just a general question.
That's well, that's our, that's our plan because we would have a hard time plowing it. We
Right.
We assume it would be a pain, so we had planned on going right over that when we removed the fence.
Yeah, it, it, all parking areas have to be a permanent paved material.
Sorry if I missed that. Yep, thanks.
Is everybody else able to see it?
Yes. You might have to click on files, yeah.
Look at that. Technology. Wow, look at that. It's a thing of beauty. All right. Oh, perfect. So now, now nobody has to back out over the sidewalk. Great. All right. Any other questions, concerns before we open the public hearing? All right, so I think for this one, you could probably stay right in your seat.
Okay.
So we'll open the public hearing. So this is a public hearing for the applicant Eric Rundell's. Project address is two twenty-five Shenango Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of an industrial cannabis business in an existing industrial building in the C six limited neighborhood commercial district. If anyone would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Tito, did we get any letters submitted?
Nope.
All right, no letters and nobody approaching the microphone. So we'll close the public hearing. All right. Any last questions, concerns? All right. All right, so seeing no other questions or concerns, at the last meeting, we determined that this was a type two and action under seeker, so no further environmental, environmental review is required. Recovered the parking area. You've updated the site plan. All right. I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Seconded by Chris. All in favor? All right, that's five in favor, zero opposed. All right.
Okay, thank you.
When do you start tearing things up in there?
Tomorrow.
You're like four months ago?
Yeah. We'll start on the, the parking areas now and the landscape zone and some of that stuff now.
And when will you be up and running, fully functioning?
Probably December first is a goal, but there's some, you know, there's some hoops you have to jump through.
Nice. All right, well, good luck.
Thanks.
All right, that concludes public hearings and final deliberations. Next item on the agenda is other business. Does anybody have any other business? Juliet, you're not usually here. Do you have other business? Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right, I have one piece of other business. Some, my, my YouTube feed is tied into the city of Binghamton every time they update something. And last week there was a meeting called the Planning Committee Meeting. And I was a little bit concerned because nobody from planning other than Robert was in that meeting and they were talking about parking requirements and they were meeting with a developer who was talking about what he wanted to do with a piece of property for the city, which is perfectly fine, I'm not, but I was very surprised that there was nobody from planning in that meeting. How, how does that happen? That, that's probably shouldn't happen, right?
So that specific meeting has to do with a developer that's seeking to purchase several parcels of property from the city. And so it was sort of a meeting to discuss the process for what would be involved with that, including obviously coming to the planning commission for approval of any development on that site. One of the, the topics that came up was that there are parking requirements in the code and that obviously those would have to be addressed as part of coming before the planning commission. Does that ally any concerns you had or?
I think it's still incredibly concerning that nobody from the planning department was in that public, publicly available meeting to let's say it felt lucky that he didn't go further into like the planning review process and, and got misinformation from somebody who would not necessarily know the right things to tell him. It, it just was concerning that Tito or Shailen or Juliet wasn't sitting next to you, which you did a fantastic job of
Sure.
answering questions. I'm not saying that, I just, just seems surprising.
Yeah, I, I understand. You know, I think that there's sort of a trying to balance wanting to help people kind of figure out how to do things in the city. And maybe, you know, being a little better about directing them to departments that might be able to help them in terms of getting ahead of some of that stuff. I believe as part of any purchase or sale of property anyway, that gets routed through planning.
Okay.
So eventually planning was going to see it one way or the other.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to bring that up. Anybody else, anything? Anybody else want to talk about YouTube videos they saw this week? Yeah, maybe, maybe not a good thing to open up for. All right. Motion to adjourn by Manny. Seconded by Chris, all in favor? Five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you.